Here in the IONELLA Chamber. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Baker, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Diomo, Counselor Asabi George, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Jackson, Counsel Lamatina, Counsel Linehan, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel O'Malley, Counselor Presley, Counsel Wu, and Counsel Jacob.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to ask all counselors and guests to please rise, and I will turn over the podium to Counsel Linehan, who will introduce our faith leader for the day. After the invocation is delivered, please remain standing, and Counsel Linehan will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor?
Thank you, Madam President. It's an honor and a privilege to introduce Father Jim Flavin. Father Flavin was born in Billerica and ordained in the priesthood in 1987. And he's educated at Boston College and St. John's Seminary. And he's the rector of Our Lady of Good Voyage, pastor of St. Monica's St. Augustine's Parish, St. Peter's Parish, and St. Vincent's DePaul Parish. And he's also the Episcopal vicar of the Central Region. And so, he's a very busy man, and he's taking the time to come and lead us in prayer. He has 42 churches in Boston as the vicar, which he's responsible to, and 57, which include other municipalities such as Cambridge, Somerville, Brookline, and Winthrop. It's an enormous workload that Catholic priests have today because of the size of the organization and their infrastructure. But Father Jim Flavin started in Dorchester at St. Williams, and he had the, as the rector of Our Lady of Good Voyage, he opened the first church chapel in 60 years in the city of Boston. So without any further ado, I'm going to introduce the Good Father. He'll say a few words and then lead us in prayer. Father Jim Flavin.
Thank you, counselors, guests. Just want to say, on a good note, we did open the first Catholic church in the city of Boston in 60 years over in the Seaport just recently. It's been a little over a month. We're averaging almost 200 visitors a day, new people going in. The folks that are going in are just happening to be walking by the place and are amazed that there's a place to be quiet. It's a church for, although it's a Catholic church, people are just going in there, finding all kinds of solace and peace in the midst of a crazy world. So there's some good news. People have been thanking us for building that in the midst of where it is. Of course, a few other corporations have now been upset that we took such prime land, but it wasn't when we started 15 years ago. It was an old parking lot, so. But just, I was mentioning to Counsel earlier, just the other day, we started an AA meeting on Tuesday evenings for professionals in that area at 5:30. A man came in at 5 o'clock from Los Angeles who was here for a convention, and he said, "I was here last year for this convention, and I fell off the wagon." And he said, "My life has been miserable." He said, "So I thought I'd come here before the convention started. I defound this church, and I was just going to say a prayer, and when I walked in, I found an AA meeting." He said, "God worked today, and I'm going to get sober." We can tell you those stories over and over. It's amazing, every single day, something like that is happening wonderfully in the Seaport here in South Boston. So thank you for your support of that project. So God is still alive. Whoever you pray to, God is still alive. Please stop in to that shrine at some point and just be quiet. It's open from 6:30 to 6:30 every single day with people there to greet you and help you in any way we can, so please stop by. So let's pray. Good and gracious God, we thank you for all the blessings you bestow upon us in this life. We thank you for all the citizens of this great city of Boston. We ask that you continue to shed your grace upon us. Help us, who are leaders in this city. Help us to always remember the poor, those who struggle, those who struggle with addiction. Help us to be people of faith. Help us in all our deliberations to be wise, to be caring. Help us to build a city where all people are welcome, where all know that they are loved and cared for. We ask you to send your blessing upon these counselors as they begin their session today. Fill them with your grace and your wisdom, and help them always to be people of integrity, truth, and love. We ask all this in your holy name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Father Flavin. I want to offer a special thanks also, because Father Flavin actually performed the baptism for Blaze a little over two years ago, so very special for me to see you here as well. Counsel Linehan?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again. We have two presentations today before our formal business starts, but first, I wanted just to extend a very, very warm welcome and exciting thank you to the sixth grade from St. Teresa's in West Roxbury for joining us today. I know Counsel O'Malley hosted you earlier, but on behalf of everyone, best wishes for a safe, happy, and very restful summer as you wrap up the end of your school year. And we'll start our presentation today with Counsel Presley.
Thank you, Madam President. I also wanted to invite up Counsel Jackson to join me at the rostrum. It is my pleasure to introduce to some and to reintroduce to many Pastor Mignard Culpepper of Pleasant Hill Baptist Church. He is no stranger to this body. I wanted us to formally salute and celebrate and thank Pastor Culpepper for his many contributions. He has been providing spiritual counsel and sustenance to many of us, to the Fathers. Piggybacking on the Fathers' comments, God has been at work in His life and has been using Him for decades, and we are very grateful for His stewardship. So far as I'm concerned, Pleasant Hill Baptist is a church without walls. You know, very often, we are at funerals and wakes and at neighborhood and civic group meetings, and members of His church are there, which is another example of how far-reaching the church's impact is. He is celebrating his 20th anniversary. I know that is hard to believe because of his elderly age, but I just wanted to salute and to celebrate him. I'm going to read just a little bit about him. Pastor Mignard Culpepper, born and raised in Boston, Reverend Mignard Culpepper received a Bachelor of Arts degree from Brandeis University. In 1982, he graduated from Suffolk University School of Law. He completed his Master's of Divinity degree from Howard Divinity School in 1986, and Reverend Culpepper took leadership at the helm of Pleasant Hill Missionary Baptist Church in June of 1987 as senior pastor. Before leading his flock at Pleasant Hill, Reverend Culpepper was installed as associate minister at the historic Metropolitan Baptist Church in Washington, DC. That's actually where, when I was in aid to Senator John Kerry, and he was also working at HUD, where we first got to know one another. In addition, Reverend Culpepper has worked on many political campaigns, notably that of Ted Kennedy in 1980 and 1992, the Clinton presidential campaign. And again, as I referenced, he served as the acting director for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Center for Faith-Based and Neighborhood Partnerships, reporting to the White House Office of Faith-Based and Neighborhood Partnerships. Under his tutelage at Pleasant Hill, we have seen many great things, such as Senior Sunday as an effort to better engage our seniors. He's partnered with the Boston Public Health Commission to combat obesity and established a Black Ministers' Prayer service in celebration of Senator Elizabeth Warren. I said he has provided spiritual counsel and sustenance to many of us, and Senator Warren is certainly at the top of that list. Through his years of ministry, Reverend Culpepper has established the dual theme of Pleasant Hill, which is "mustard seed faith," quote-unquote, and "the church on the hill where we love to be pleasant," unquote. And so, now I'll invite Counsel Jackson up to say a few words, and then we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. I'm proud to represent District 7, and I'm proud to have Pleasant Hill in my district, but I'm also proud to have Pastor Mignard Culpepper, who is not only a pastor to those in His church, but literally to the neighborhood and community. I've received several late-night phone calls when something happens. He gets up and actually shows up when something happens in the neighborhood and community. And I want to thank him for the past several summers in which he's actually put forward funding from His church and then sought additional funding to ensure that young people are going to be safe in Trotter Park, and literally that the church and the community take over that park. And also, he has actually helped many members who have left incarceration reintegrate into our community by hiring them and stewarding them to do the right things, things that uplift our neighborhood and our community. I want to thank you, Pastor Culpepper, for your walk. I also want to thank you for the triumph that you've recently had over cancer. And Pastor Culpepper is healthy and cancer-free, and we are happy that his, and I want to thank you for your transparency. A lot of folk go through things, but you were willing to actually help all of us understand what was going on and also to see your grace and your strength through that time. So with that said, please give it up for our friend on his 20th anniversary.
I do want to say, typical pastor, he said, "How long do I have?" So he...
Thank you, Brother Counselor Tito Jackson and Sister Ayanna Presley, and to my sister, Michelle Wu, thank you. What an honor it is to stand here at this podium today and see how the Boston City Council has changed over the years. I remember when Bruce Bowling ran years ago, I was just a young law student, but he needed someone to run his campaign. I ran Bruce's campaign when he made it to the city council and have watched the council grow and develop, Sister Campbell, and the diverse body that it is today. What a blessing it is to see how the city has grown. Doesn't mean that we don't have much work to do. We still have much work to do, but I've seen the work that we have already put in to bring the city of Boston to where it is today. So it's really just a blessing to stand here today, to see the young folks in the chamber today, to see how Brother Flaherty, the city has developed, and to see how we can work together to bring about the city that we all dreamed that it will be one day. When I think about my travels around the country, I hear all kinds of different things around Boston, but I invite them into Boston to come and really see, taste, and see the city of Boston. So it's really an honor, and it's my privilege to be here today, just to stand and see how great a city we have, how far we have come. Brother Clemens, never would I have known years ago that we would see Charles Clemens even running for office, but every time I see Charles, it reminds me of how far the city has come and how far the city has just to go. Just want to thank you again for having me today. I keep praying for y'all. Y'all keep praying for me. We've had many blessings, but we have many blessings that are waiting for us, as long as we stand together and fight for what is right, good, and just, and loving. Thank you, and may God bless all of you.
Yes, a blessing for the baby. And for our second presentation, I'd like to invite up Counselor Asabi George.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm happy today to speak about the successes of two students from East Boston High School, Kevin and Christian. Seeing such accomplishments from the school I teach at once is truly inspiring. What these students accomplished is nothing short of incredible. They secured a first-place finish in the 2017 Intel International Science and Engineering Fair at the Behavior and Social Science category. Their project, How Effective Is Your Virtual Reality Experience, tasked itself with testing, say that a few times fast, tasked itself with testing the effectiveness of low-cost virtual reality, an important question in this growing field. Bright minds such as these are the future of Boston, and I'm glad that this future is being defined by their hard work. I also would like to thank their teacher, John Menkens. Mr. Menkens has demonstrated incredible dedication to his students, a trait that surely plays a significant role in their success. It's always good to hear stories like this from the Boston Public Schools. The students and educators that are here today are what make our schools among the best in the country. I have, I do want to recognize, before I welcome, and I've been referring to them this morning, as the internationally awarded student scientists, before I welcome them, I would like to introduce that we are joined by the headmaster of East Boston High School, Phil Branger-40, as well as Tommy Welsh, who's the instructional superintendent for, superintendent for BPS, as well as the school science program director, Kathleen Bateman, the assistant director of science, Holly Rosa, and Pam Palatier, who's the director of K-12 Science and Engineering, as well as Kevin's mom. But I'd like to welcome, welcome, who's probably the proudest of all, I'm sure, but I'd like to welcome Mr. Menkens and the students to say a few words. No, 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 wait. I'm sorry. Sorry, I missed. I get so excited about the East D kids. I get so excited about the East D kids that I forget. The proudest graduate of East Boston High, the district city counselor, Sal Lamatina.
I am a proud graduate from East Boston High School, a long, long time ago, class of 78, but it's really an honor to be here with these two great students from East Boston High School. There's a lot of good things happening in our high schools and our schools in the city of Boston, and people forget that. And so, it's just like, this is a prime example of these two young men who won this international award will be going places. And so, I'm just proud to be able to say thank you to them, to the headmasters, to the teachers, and to the parents. You're doing a great job, these two young men. Congratulations to all. Thank you.
Hi, my name is John Menkens, a science teacher that shepherded these fellows through their science fair project. I want to thank the council, Counselor George, and assembled guests for hosting us today. I'm very proud of Christian and Kevin, and I'd like to wish them well in their future endeavors. Thank you.
My name is Kevin Tercios. I was one of the students at the International Science Fair, and I would just like to thank Counselor George for hosting us, and the rest of the council too, for hosting us today.
Hi, my name is Christian Figaro. I was also a partner in the science fair project. I'd like to say we're very humbly honored just to be able to come up here and say thank you to all of you for hosting us. It's been such an amazing event, and a thank you isn't enough, but it's as much as I can give. Thank you so much.
So Counsel Lamatina and I are presenting both Christian and Kevin and Mr. Menkens with citations today to recognize their impressive accomplishments. And I think those of us who have struggled through any science class, whether it be in middle school or high school or college, can appreciate certainly their effort and their success. But so, we have official resolutions for myself and Counsel Lamatina, and we reached out to the mayor's office, and the mayor as well is presenting you, all three of you, on your success, and congratulations for your success. So thank you all, and I think we'll do a nice picture.
Congratulations. Good luck. Good luck with graduation. Have fun at prom tomorrow night. Thank you, Counsel Asabi George, Counsel Lamatina, and congratulations again. Madam Clerk, could you please mark that Counsel Jackson is here? And we'll begin with approval of the minutes from last meeting. Are there any edits or amendments? Seeing and hearing none, the minutes are approved. And communications from His Honor, the mayor.
Would you like me to?
Actually, we'll do separately.
Docket number 0800, message and order authorizing the Department of Neighborhood Development to accept and expend payments of $30 million given to the city of Boston's Inclusionary Development Policy Fund for the purpose of producing and preserving affordable housing in the city of Boston.
Docket 0800 will be assigned to the Committee on Housing and Community Development.
Docket number 0801, message and order authorizing the Department of Neighborhood Development to apply for, accept, and expend federal FY17 continuum of care grant funds not to exceed $28 million from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to support programs that provide services and housing to the homeless.
Docket 0801 will be assigned to the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery.
Docket number 0802, message and order authorizing the Department of Neighborhood Development to apply for, accept, and expend a federal fiscal year 2017 Housing and Community Development Grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, known as HUD, in the amount of $24 million, 500,000, I'm sorry, $24 million, 500,000. The grant will support the Community Development Block Grant, known as Home Investment Partnership Program Housing Opportunities, for persons with AIDS and the Emergency Solution Grant.
Docket 0802 will be assigned to the Committee on Housing and Community Development.
Docket number, I'm sorry. Docket number 0803, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant of $15,000 for the Food and Security Nutrition Incentive awarded by the U.S. Department of Agriculture, passed through the MA, Mass. Executive Office of Health and Human Services, to be administered by the Boston Center for Youth and Families. The grant will fund technically, technical assistance to implement the Healthy Incentives Program of the Mass Department of Transitional Assistance.
Chair recognizes the chairwoman of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, Counsel Presley.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to ask to suspend the rules and accept this grant, which will augment technical support for the implementation of the Healthy Incentives Program through our Boston Center for Youth and Families. The Healthy Incentives Program is currently matching the money from SNAP benefits for the purchases of local fruits and vegetables at participating farmers' markets, farm stands, mobile markets, and community-supported agriculture, farm share programs. This grant will help the BCYF implement the three main goals of the Healthy Incentives Program. The first goal is to reduce barriers to participation in the new benefit for both SNAP clients and retailers. Second, to increase the availability of locally grown fruits and vegetables for SNAP clients. And third, to make it easier for SNAP retailers to process both SNAP and the new Healthy Incentives Program benefit. I move to suspend the rules to accept and expend this grant money to help the city reduce food insecurity and to increase access to fresh and healthy foods in all our neighborhoods.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley moves for suspension and passage of docket 0803. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0803 has been passed.
Docket number 0804, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant in the amount of $7,500 from the University of Massachusetts, Boston, for the purpose of tracking and managing the mayor's policy agenda.
Chair will move for suspension and passage of docket 0804. Fairly self-explanatory, but given the amount and given the importance of the partnership from UMass Boston in helping support the mayor's policy agenda, asking for suspension at this time. Anyone have any comments on that docket? All in favor of passing docket 0804, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Docket 0804 has been passed. Reports of public officers and others.
Docket number 0805, communication was received from Counsel Michael F. Flaherty that the Shiloh Chiropractic Offices has no business currently before the city of Boston or the Boston City Council.
Docket 0805 will be placed on file.
Would you like me to read the next one?
Yes, please, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0806, communication was received from William P. Christopher, Commissioner of Inspection Services, regarding the city of Boston Truck Side Guard Ordinance, CBC4-8.1, annual report for 2015/2016. And docket number 0807, communication was received from William P. Christopher, Commissioner of Inspection Services, regarding the city of Boston Truck Side Guard Ordinance, CBC4-8.1, annual report for 2016/27.
Docket numbers 0806 and 0807 will be placed on file.
Docket number 0808, the constable bonds of the following have been duly approved by the Collective Treasurer were received. Jacob Alley, Mark Amore, Ameriko Baptista, Mika Brown Correa, Rolfen Kazoo, Ron Cobb... Jacob Alley, Mark Amore, Ameriko Baptista, Mika Brown Correa, Rolson Kazoo, Ron Cobb, Wendell Donald, Mark A. Evagladius, Theodore Hedren, Colin Harrell, Atresha Irons, Purnell Jackson, Michael A. James, Vincent James, David A. Johnson, Stephen Jones, William F. Joyce, William G. Joyce, Anthony Keller, Erlene Lee, Ayesha Lee, Norman Lowe, Verdina Malden, Burton Melvaski, Arthur Montgomery, Paul Morelli, Derek W. Morrison, Kiana Chetelier, and Eric Shora.
So again, similar to recent meetings, this is another batch of constable bonds that have been approved by Boston Police and the Collector's Treasure's Office. I know Council Flaherty and Council McCarthy have both spoken on this in the past about the updated and more stringent procedures. So unless there's objection or further comment, Chair moves for suspension of the rules and approval of these constable bonds under the usual terms and conditions. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. These constable, ayes have it, and these bonds have been approved under the usual terms and conditions.
Docket number 0809, communication from council at the location for the Wednesday City Council meetings scheduled between July and September of 2017 will be held at historic Daniel Hall.
So I mentioned this again at the most recent meeting, but we are confirming Fanual Hall for our summer meetings in July, August, and the first half of September due to renovations for accessibility in the chamber. We are told that the construction project should be finished by the time that we get through these meetings because Fanual Hall had a conflict for the last two weeks in September anyway. So hopefully, we will not need to worry about that, and we'll be back in the space by the time that conflict would have occurred. But just in case, we are holding two extra dates in those last two weeks of September, and we'll let you know as construction starts if we'll need to spill into it. But so far, just the, just the location is changing for these weeks. And docket 0809 will be placed on file.
Madam President, would you like me to read docket 0810 through 0817?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0810, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Will Nellia Rivera as a member of the City of Boston Cultural Scholarship Fund Committee for term expiring June 1, 2020. Docket number 0811, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Marty Martinez as a member of the City of Boston Cultural Scholarship Fund Committee for term expiring June 1, 2020. Docket number 0812, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Byron Beaman as a member of the City of Boston Cultural Scholarship Fund Committee for term expiring June 1, 2020. Docket number 0813, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Carol Lee as a member of the City of Boston's Cultural Scholarship Fund Committee for term expiring June 1, 2020. Docket number 0814, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Michelle Reiner as a member of the Boston Cultural Scholarship Fund Committee for term expiring June 1, 2020. Docket number 0815, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Annabelle Gomes as a member of the Board of the Fund for Boston Neighborhoods. Docket number 0816, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Julie Burns as a member of the Board of the Fund for Boston Neighborhoods. And docket number 0817, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Andrew Grace, Director of Economic and Strategic Planning, as the City of Boston's alternate representative to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, effective as of May 11, 2017.
Docket numbers 0810 through 0817 will be placed on file.
Docket number 0818, communication was received from the City Council President Michelle Wu regarding the Boston City Council's role in urban renewal extension.
So on docket 0818, we'd just ask you all to take a look in your packets at the letter. This is following up on our last urban renewal update that Council Linehan had chaired with the BRA and questions about what the council's role would be in future extensions. As discussed then, the BRA, sorry, the BPDA and the council are on the same page that a further council vote would be required, and they have now followed up with a letter in writing confirming that understanding. So that is on the record, and now it will be in the council system for future years when this will come up. Any questions on that one? Council Jackson.
Madam President, if you could just restate, just so I understand, the, what we've been given is from the BPDA, or is this from DHCD relative to their extension? And I, and I bring it up, and for those who are viewing, the, it is my, it was my understanding, and we asked for clarification, that based on the last extension of urban renewal, that the BPDA had actually moved forward with a process and codified something that means the council does not have to legally extend their existence into the future. So I want to understand, because we are, they are around because of state legislation, that this distinction is coming from who? And is it the body in which actually signs off on that extension? Because it's also my understanding that there wasn't a requirement from, at the state level, for there to, for them to approve the extension, that they only had to send information that they were going to be extending. So if we could be clear on who this is coming from, and does that entity actually have the power to actually make that statement?
Thank you, Council Jackson. So this is why I felt it was important to include it as an official communication in the council agenda, and therefore, the entire document is available online. It's three pages, one page from me just kind of explaining the situation, giving background, and then two pages as a letter from the BPDA. So if you look at the first page, essentially, I summarize that, as you mentioned, Council Jackson, DHCD approved the extension, but also mentioned in a sentence in their approval that "a mere temporal extension without substantive change to the basic elements of the plan," so keeping the boundaries the same, but just extending the number of years, quote, "does not constitute a major modification and is in the process of revising its regulations to provide greater clarity on that point." To my knowledge, they have not yet come up with those regulations, so we'll follow that closely and get back to you. Regardless of their process, the internal conversation between the council and the BPDA was that the BPDA remains committed to pursuing the same process that they had this last round. Public meetings, meetings, public hearings and meetings with the council, a council vote before they would even go to the DHCD for approval. So their two-page letter that follows basically codifies that, that agreement, that they would not pursue DHCD approval without a positive vote from the council first. But we will follow up on the DHCD regulations piece. Any other questions on that? Great. Thank you. Docket 0818 will be placed on file. And moving on to reports of committees.
Madam President, would you like me to read 0539 through 0543?
I'll defer to Council Siomo on this one. Chairman Siomo, would you like to read all these dockets together? Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0539, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was deferred on April 12, 2017. Docket number 0539, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to appropriate the amount of $45,385,000 from the city's capital grant fund in order to provide funding for various transportation and public realm improvement. These projects are aligned with the goals of the Go Boston 2030, the city's transportation master plan. The funds shall be credited to the capital grant fund from the Parking Meter Fund to miss a report recommending the order ought to be read for the first time and assigned for further action. Docket number 0540, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was deferred on April 12, 2017. Docket number 0540, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to enter into a one or more lease, lease purchase or installment sales agreement in fiscal year 2018 in an amount not to exceed $27,500,000. These funds are to be used by various city departments for the acquisition of equipment in furtherance of their retrospective governmental function. The list of equipment includes computer equipment, hardware and software, motor vehicles and trailers, ambulances, fighter fight, firefighting equipment, office equipment, telecommunication equipment, photocopying equipment, medical equipment, school and educational equipment, school buses, parking meters, streetlight installation, traffic signal equipment, and equipment functionally related to and components of the foregoing, submit a report recommending the order ought to be read for the first time and assigned for further action. Docket number 0541, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April 12, 2017. Docket 0541, message and order for an appropriation order in the amount of $255,260,000 for the acquisition of interest in land or the acquisition of assets or the landscaping, alteration, remediation, rehabilitation, yeah, rehabilitation of improvement of public land, the construction, reconstruction, rehabilitation, improvements, alterations, remodeling, enlarging, enlargement, demolition, removal, or extraordinary repairs of public buildings, facilities, assets, work, or infrastructure for the cost of feasibility studies or engineering or architectural services for plans and specifications for the development, design, purchase, and installation of computer hardware or software, and computer-assisted integrated financial management and accounting systems for any other public work improvement or asset with a maximum useful life of at least five years and not otherwise specified for planting shade trees for the purpose of various city departments, including the Boston Center for Youth and Families, Boston Redevelopment Authority, Boston Department of Innovation and Technology, Public Works, School, and Transportation Departments, submit a report recommending the order ought to be read for the first time and assigned for further action. Docket number 0542, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April 12, 2017. Docket number 0542, message and appropriation order in the amount of $3,135,000 for the construction and rehabilitation of municipal golf courses, including the acquisition and reconstruction of land, installation, and replacement of irrigation systems, the construction and rehabilitation of buildings, and the cost of equipment and furnishing for the purpose of the Parks and Recreation Department, submit a report recommending the order ought to be read for the first time and assigned for further action. And docket number 0543, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April 12, 2017. Docket number 0543, message and appropriation order in the amount of $660,000 in aid of the Economic Development and Industrial Corporation and the Boston Redevelopment Authority, DBA, Boston Planning and Development Agency, for the engineering and design of improvements at the Raymond L. Flynn Marine Park, to miss a report recommending the order ought to be read for the first time and assigned for further action.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. On dockets 0539 through 0543, Chair recognizes Council Mark Siomo.
...you for your thoughtful participation for the many hours and weeks of review of the budget. And this being our first action, I also want to recognize all the efforts by our central staff, and I'll recognize them in more depth later on. But this is our first action on the FY18 budget. It's the capital, and these represent all the capital for FY18, sponsored by the mayor and referred to our committee on April 12, 2017. As you know, these dockets require two votes by the council, a minimum of two weeks apart. I rise to ask for a first reading of these dockets and to ask my colleagues for a vote in the affirmative to have them assigned for further action. These dockets comprise the FY18 capital authorization, which includes a grand total of $332 million in investments in Boston and has projects in every neighborhood of the city. Highlights include, for BPS, we have the authorization of $25.8 million for the Dearborn Snam Academy, which is part of a $73.5 million improvement. A build BPS fund, funding reserve for future mass building authority accelerated repair program projects. Parks Department authorizations include rehabilitations of tennis, basketball, street hockey courts citywide, ongoing programs of street tree planting throughout the city. Boston Centers for Youth and Families, major renovations to the Curly Community Center. Public Works authorizations for construction, reconstruction of roads, sidewalks, and the Whittier Street housing development in conjunction with $30 million HUD grant to revitalize the development and surrounding neighborhoods. Installation of streetlights is ongoing. Fire Department authorizations, design and construction of new fire stations for Engine 17 in Dorchester and station, Engine 42 in Roxbury. Purchase of new fire apparatus for fiscal 18 has schedule, is scheduled in the apparatus replacement plan. Transportation Department authorizations implementing, implementation of roadway design changes to reduce speeds, control movements, and improve visibility of vulnerable users as part of the Vision Zero program. Department of Innovation and Technology authorizations, investments in data analytics tools, technologies, and processes to empower data-driven management. Boston Public Health Commission authorizations, including replacement of existing budget software with a more robust platform to achieve compatibility with other IT systems. And I think, over the years, we all know that we want the Boston Public Health Commission budget submission to us to reflect consistency with all the other budgets that we review. So that's a welcome improvement. The Boston Public Library authorizations include a comprehensive building renovation at the Rosendale Branch Library, improvement projects for various branches, including South End, Lower Mills, South Boston, and West Roxbury. Boston Planning and Development Agency authorizations for various small projects to preserve the structural integrity of piers and docks at the Raymond L. Flynn Marine Park. Miscellaneous authorizations for various critical facility repairs in various departments' facilities and in various neighborhoods. I believe this is a responsible plan that will help with important maintenance and upkeep of our assets, improve our neighborhoods, and demonstrate our commitment to a green and economically viable Boston. I ask you to vote in the affirmative to assign these matters for further action. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Siomo. As mentioned, we will be taking a roll call vote on each of these, the first reading, and then we'll be taking it up for further action after two weeks or longer. So we'll start with a roll call vote on docket 0539.
And docket number 0539, Council Baker. Council Baker, yes. Council Campbell. Council Campbell, yes. Council Siomo. Council Siomo, yes. Council Sabby George. Council Sabby George, yes. Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, yes. Council Jackson. Council Jackson, no. Council La Matina. Council La Matina, yes. Council Linehan. Council Linehan, yes. Council McCarthy. Council McCarthy, yes. Council O'Malley. Council O'Malley, yes. Council Presley. Council Presley, yes. Council Wu.
Yes.
Council Wu, yes. Council Zachem. Council Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number 05...
Thank you. Docket 0539 has been, has received a 12 to 1 vote for its first reading and is assigned for further action. For docket 0540, Madam Clerk, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Council Baker. Council Baker, yes. Council Campbell. Council Campbell, yes. Council Siomo. Council Siomo, yes. Council Sabby George. Council Sabby... Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel LaMachina. Counsel LaMachina, yes. Counsel Linehan. Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zakim. Counsel Zakim, yes. Madam President, docket number zero-five-four-zero, receiving.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket zero-five-four-zero has received a unanimous first reading and is assigned for further action.
Docket number zero-five-four-one, Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell. Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Asabi George. Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel LaMachina. Counsel LaMachina, yes. Counsel Linehan. Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zakim. Counsel Zakim, yes. Madam President, docket number zero-five-four-one, pass. Vote.
Thank you. Docket zero-five-four-one has received a unanimous first reading and is assigned for further action.
Docket number zero-five-four-two, Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell. Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Asabi George. Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel LaMachina. Counsel LaMachina, yes. Counsel Linehan. Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zakim. Counsel Zakim, yes. Madam President, docket number zero-five-four-two, unanimous vote for.
Thank you. Docket zero-five-four-two has received a unanimous first reading and is assigned for further action.
Docket number zero-five-four-three, Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell. Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Asabi George. Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel LaMachina. Counsel LaMachina, yes. Counsel Linehan. Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zakim. Counsel Zakim, yes. Madam President, docket number zero-five-four-three, receiving. Pass.
Thank you. Docket zero-five-four-three has received a unanimous first reading and will be assigned for further action. Matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number zero-seven-five-zero, message and order approving a supplemental appropriation of one million, one-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars for various departments to cover the FY17 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Boston and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees AFL-CIO Council Ninety-three and Locals AFSMI. The terms of the contract are July first, twenty-sixteen through June thirtieth, twenty-seventeen, and July first, twenty-seventeen through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty. The major provisions of the contract include base wage increase of two percent effective the first K period of October of each fiscal year. The agreements also contain other benefits, including a new clothing allowance starting in twenty-seventeen and steps beginning in October of twenty-eighteen.
On docket zero-seven-five-zero, Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, Counsel Siomo.
Thank you again, Madam President. The committee held its hearing yesterday. I had testimony from our CFO, Dave Sweeney, Alexis Kachuk, Director of Labor Relations, and Katie Hammer, our Budget Director. This agreement covers approximately one-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty AFSMI members working in various depart- departments, including Public Works, Transportation, Parks, and Inspeccional Services. There are two successive agreements that run from July first, twenty-sixteen through July thirtieth, I'm sorry, yeah, July thirtieth, twenty-seventeen, and July first, twenty-seventeen through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty. I think that's the typo, it should be June thirtieth, twenty-seventeen. The estimated cost of the agreement over the four years is fifteen-point-seven million dollars, and as the clerk read, the effective first pay period, October twenty-sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen are each two percent increases. There is also an addition of a step ten in the twenty-eighteen and step eleven in the twenty-nineteen, both with a one percent e- increase attached to those step increases. Other changes include the elimination of boot and uniform allowances slash reimbursements and establishment of a new two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar clothing and blue boot allowance for all employees, an increased city contribution to the AFSMI Housing Trust, which provides housing and rental assistance to AFSMI members living in the City of Boston, several incremental changes to the training and career fund previously established, a monthly contribution toward an AFSMI prepaid legal service fund will be made to aid employees needing legal advice and counseling, and changes that address paid parental leave benefits, on-call provisions, and capping the sick leave redemption amount upon retirement. I recommend passage of this docket. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Siomo. At this time, Counsel Siomo moves for acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket zero-seven-five-zero. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket zero-seven-five-zero has been passed. Motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number zero-eight-one-nine, Counselors Asabi George and Baker, offer the following order for hearing regarding medically-supervised injection facilities.
Counsel Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today I rise to call for a hearing regarding medically-supervised injection facilities or safe injection sites. A safe injection site is a place where medical professionals supervise intravenous drug use in an effort to prevent overdose death. Safe injection sites are a harm reduction strategy, and even though they have been in existence for a number of years, they are still extremely controversial. The opioid epidemic is a serious and deadly crisis. On average, six people a day are dying from overdose in Massachusetts, and our rates of overdose death are going up faster than any other state. This is not, there is not a family in Boston or in the region that is untouched by this tragedy. In April, the Massachusetts Medical Association passed a resolution asking the Commonwealth to open up two safe injection sites, and they recommend that one of those sites be in Boston's South End. In their report, they cite, they cite information about outcomes from a facility in Vancouver that has demonstrated a thirty-eight percent reduction in overdose deaths and created a clear path to treatment, both incredible outcomes. But they acknowledge the impacts on the community around the site have been mixed. They have seen a reduction in public use and a reduction in improperly discarded sharps, but they have not seen a reduction in drug dealing or related crimes. Right now, as a city, we are bearing the brunt of this crisis. The centralization of services has detrimental effects on our neighborhoods. Boston is carrying the load for the state and the region. Since two thousand and fifteen, the city's mobile sharps team has collected more than twenty thousand improperly discarded sharps. Those are needles in our streets, in our gutters, in our ballfields, in our school playgrounds. And for every step we take to innovate, to provide better services, and to save lives, one of our neighboring cities and towns takes a step backwards to eliminate services and send their most vulnerable to us. Boston will always have open arms, but that does not take away the responsibility of those neighboring towns and cities. We need them in this fight. Right now, the conversation about safe injection sites is happening around us, about us, but not including us. We do not have a seat at that table. There are currently two pieces of legislation at the State House. One is a feasibility study regarding the siting of a location. The other is a law that will make safe injection sites legal. We cannot be reactive. We need to lead this conversation. I honestly don't know how I feel about safe injection sites. My gut is to be very much opposed to them. I hate the idea of normalizing drug use. I do believe in prevention and harm reduction. I do believe in creating better access to treatment and supporting lifelong recovery. And I do believe putting pressure on our neighbors, neighboring cities and towns to help us in this work. I don't know if safe injection sites are the answer or even part of the answer, but I do know that this conversation cannot happen without us. I want to thank Counselor Baker for being my co-sponsor in this hearing order. I know that this will be a very difficult conversation, but I'm looking forward to hearing all sides, from the proponents and the opponents on this issue, and hope to have it expedited here. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Asabi George. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam, Madam President, excuse me, and also Counsel George. Speaking about this through the lens of the District Council, where the recommendation as to where the, the safe injection site should go, I believe that this was important to at least know exactly what we're talking about. Very much like, like, like Counsel George, I think I'm a little stronger in my position. I, I don't think that this is a good i- idea, but there could be a location for it. That location could be Long Island, you know, along with other programming. I, I don't necessarily agree with a lot of things that the medical community is doing with trying to get people off drugs, off heroin, off methanol, and maybe in this discussion where we, where we have people in front of us that are making decisions about us, we can ask them about replacement therapy and those sorts of things, and, and, you know, what is it, what's our end goal? What are we going to do with everybody that we have on our streets? You know, let's have a discussion about what we're doing, how people are getting into detox, detox beds, how long they are. Do they have an option to, to, to go cold turkey and not have replacement therapy? That's a little off, say, injection site, but very, very concerned about this decision, especially where the recommendation is, is to, is to put it in an area where everybody that I talk to is totally overwhelmed down there. We are totally overwhelmed, and I think, I, I think we're doing more than ever with this problem of addiction, but I don't know how much more we can handle, and we certainly cannot handle it down there. People are up at arms about marijuana dispensaries. I'll take two marijuana dispensaries, you put your, your safe injection site someplace else. So I hope I'm clear in this. This is very much about what, so we can find out what exactly these are, and, and, and again, let's reopen the discussion about, about Long Island. Let's maybe talk about another two percent tax where we can rebuild that bridge and start talking about rehabilitation centers at Long Island, not just, not just safe injection sites and, and methadone clinics and things that are numbing our whole population. The methadone is numbing our whole population. So I think I've gone on enough. I hope to see you all at the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. Counsel Linehan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to commend both sponsors in taking this on. This is truly something that, you know, I haven't thought it through either, and as a district city councilor and having dealt with many of the same things that Counselor Jackson and Counsel Baker have, you know, that, that would be my reaction in the same, in the same vein, that we don't need them in the same place where everything else has already happened, but we need them here. We need people here that are talking about this, this issue. And I just wanted to, to recognize that we need to take all of this stuff head-on, not sweeping it under the rug, and making people who are developing these policies accountable to people, which we represent. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Linehan. Would you like to sign on?
Yep.
Madam Clerk, could you please add Counsel Linehan's name? Counsel McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I appreciate the authors of, of, of this hearing. I'd like to sign on. I know that everybody in this chamber does their homework, and I urge you on this to really do your homework. When this came up, I started to do my homework, reading articles, especially the CBC documentaries. There's a seven-part series, there's several documentaries on what happened to the neighborhood that this was put in, and I urge you all to start, I'm, I'm like, I'm like on the fourth out of seven, but there's another documentary, it's about forty-eight minutes long, that I watched. I urge you to watch this video, see what happens to the neighborhood that this is surrounding. We are in the business of helping people, and I get that, but we're also in the business of taking care of the people who also live here. And once again, we're going to have people from, not from Boston, coming from all over the city, all over the state, all over New England practically, to come into somebody's neighborhood, in this case, Counsel Baker's neighborhood, possibly, and what happens to those neighborhoods are disgraceful. So I urge you all, I know you all are very diligent in doing your homework, but let's do our homework before we come to an educational hearing, because we need to, we need to have our own thoughts in our heads before we are listening to both sides of this story. Those documentaries are very, very powerful, so I urge you to watch them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Madam Clerk, please add Counsel McCarthy's name. Please add Counsel Siomo, Counsel LaMachina, Counsel Presley, Counsel O'Malley, and Counsel Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just rise to commend Counsel Asabi George and Counsel Baker. I knew very little about this until I saw your hearing order, so I mean, I'm looking forward to the hearing, looking forward to hearing all perspectives on this. I will say, I think it's extremely important, like you said in your remarks, that we be a part of the conversation. A lot of these decisions happen at the State House or behind closed doors in safe buildings, ultimately affecting our residents, affecting our, our, our neighbors, and frankly, sometimes we don't know what the decision process is, we don't know the facts, we don't know much of anything, for that matter. So I applaud you for getting ahead of this. I applaud Counsel Baker as well, and I look forward to hearing. Please do add my name, and thanks again.
Thank you, Counsel Campbell. Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Campbell's name. Counsel Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I want to give kudos to Counselor Asabi George and Counsel Baker. This is an important issue, and I also absolutely agree with you. The state, in their infinite wisdom, has allowed there to be four methadone clinics within a five-block radius, and I want to compliment Counsel Flaherty on some legislation he put forward around medical marijuana that does not allow that to happen. And so if we're going to have this conversation, if they're going to be making rules for us in the City of Boston, we should also have a conversation about how neighborhoods and communities aren't dis- desperately affected in the way that they're affected. We all see everything that is going on in the Mass Ave, Melnea Cass area. There is absolutely a crisis in that area, and that is on top of the sad closure of the Long Island Bridge. We have to be speaking about these things in hol- with a holistic approach and not a Band-Aid approach, and so we should have this conversation. We should see what it sounds like, but when it comes down to it, if we're going to have a conversation with the state, there's some things that they should be doing to ensure that this doesn't continue to mushroom. I, I, I had, I heard it from one of my constituents this, this morning for about an hour, for what's going on right in his neighborhood and community, the number of break-ins in, in and around that, that neighborhood, the number of incidents of, of drug dealing, and sadly, in the last four or five months, a couple of shootings that have occurred. We, if we're going to have a state, a, a state legislation that's telling us what we should be doing, but we have some conversations that we want to have with them about what they should be doing in terms of sending more resources towards the City of Boston to deal with these issues, as well as having a, a rule that does not allow there to be this level and concentration of care for a specific group of folks in the City of Boston. Not in my, it's not a "not in my backyard," but it can't all fall on the shoulders of one specific neighborhood in the City of Boston. That is unfair, and if the state is going to have this conversation, we have to have a conversation with them about resources and what this would, would look like and how it would play out. So kudos, thank you for being ahead, ahead of it, and also making sure that our, our council, who, we only represent Boston, and I, I love my friends up at the State House, but we represent the City of Boston, and it's our job as city councillors to guide what happens in our city. city of Boston, and it's our job as city councils to guide what happens in our city. And those decisions should come through this body. And I look forward, please sign my name, and I look forward to a robust conversation about what this would mean in the neighborhoods that we're looking at. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Jackson's name. And Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a horrible idea. Kudos to our colleagues, City Councilor Anissa Sabi George and Counselor Frank Baker for being proactive in injecting the city of Boston into the discussion. And I come at this, and I put my recovery record up against anyone here, as well as the council in the entire City Hall. And my father before me probably trumps all of us. So I come from a recovery home, and I come from a recovery environment, and nothing more upsetting than to talk about having safe injection sites in the city of Boston. I would quite frankly rather be having a discussion on how we should be in them. Boston does more than its fair share. This is a regional problem that requires a regional solution. I'll go with you, folks. Come to our recovery homes, come to our halfway and three-quarter houses all throughout the city of Boston. There are a lot of city kids in any of those places? Nope. They're all from the suburban communities. Suburban communities, their sons, their daughters, their families are being ravaged by heroin. Yet, when it comes to those communities stepping up to the plate and offering treatment and recovery options in halfway and three-quarter houses, it is nimbly. And so we need to draw the line in the sand. If you've been over to Melnea Casts, the South Hampton Street, it's a disgrace. It's an absolute disgrace, and I've referenced it as sort of the land of the living dead, just walking zombies. The residents over there, the businesses over there have had enough. Shame on folks to suggest that it should just go to the South End. The South End, probably more than any neighborhood in the city of Boston, has done more than its fair share on this particular issue. And then just to, it's not even realistic. The average heroin user does about a gram of heroin a day. Show of hands, anyone know how many bags of heroin that is? It's 25 bags. 25 bags of heroin equals one gram. The average heroin user is using a gram. If anyone here thinks they're going to be making 25 trips back and forth to the South End and South Hampton, it's not going to happen. It's not going to happen. Or when they score a bag, if you think they're going to waste their time getting on a bus and taking the train or taxi or wherever, walk over the bridge to get there, that's not going to happen either. That's going to be, how do they get their hands on a quick fix? So it's not even going to work realistically. It's not practical, and Boston shouldn't be the dumping ground. So I've kind of had it with this. I'm drawing the line in the sand. I would like to participate in the hearing, get the facts, maybe educate some folks on the fact that we are doing more than our fair share, and would offer that maybe we join together and we talk about banning safe injection sites on a whole host of reasons. So thank you for your time and attention, Madam President.
Would you like to sign on, Counselor?
No.
Okay. Madam Clerk, could you please add the chair's name to docket 0819 and assign it to the committee? Oh, apologies, I missed Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker, you have the floor again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize for the second go at it. A couple of things here. I don't want this to be confused with the low threshold space that the city's looking at now. Two totally different things. The low threshold space is more of a space for people to go in, in the daytime low threshold being they might not have to pass through metal detectors and that sort of stuff. The low threshold places are where people like Jim Green from the Health Department can go and sit next to these people in a kind of a non-threatening environment, a way to try and get people off the street. And I believe, safe injection sites need federal approval also, federal and state approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Baker. Docket 0819 will be assigned to the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery.
Docket number 0820, Counselor Presley offered the following order for hearing to discuss the policy reform and public education project with the National Black Women's Justice Institute known as NBWJI in the Boston City Council.
Counselor Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This order that I'm filing today is exactly why I ran to serve on and to govern on this body, to fight unapologetically for girls and women, and to diversify the public narrative and discourse about who is at and proven risk. Very often, when we are talking about opportunity youth, that narrative is dominated by our black and brown boys and men, and that is certainly true when we're talking about the school-to-prison pipeline. But our girls are at risk too. And if we are not intentional in our school policies, both in charter and in district, rather than our schools being places that are safe, they will be places that are environments that are hostile and promote a climate of punishment. And so I just wanted to say to the girls of the Mystic Valley Charter School, the Cook Sisters, Deanna and Maya, and millions more, as I stand here rocking my twists hairstyle, that this is for you. I am so honored to be partnering with Dr. Monique Morris of the National Black Women's Justice Institute on the issue of school climate and its disproportionate impact on young girls of color and their learning. For those of you who may be unfamiliar, the National Black Women's Justice Institute is an organization focused on the reduction of racial and gender disparities in the justice systems affecting black women, girls, and their families. NBWJI conducts research, provides technical assistance, engages in public education, promotes civic engagements, and advocates for informed and effective policies. NBWJI operates under the fiscal partnership of the National Council on Crime and Delinquency. I am especially excited to partner with activist and scholar Dr. Michelle Morris because of the impact her book personally had on me, Push Out. It's right here, Push Out: The Criminalization of Black Girls in Our Schools. This book had a profound impact in shaping my own advocacy for women and girls and prompted me to recognize the growing criminalization of black girls. Now, we often say that the best policies are data-informed. Data shows that school climate and policies often disproportionately target black girls as they over-represent students' discipline for behaviors associated with subjective, sometimes biased, decision-making. Recently, the issue of appearance-neutral school climate and policies and their unique impact on black girls has been brought sharply into focus, especially here in Massachusetts. These seemingly neutral policies can have serious impacts on all girls of color, but especially black girls. Again, if we really do believe the best policies are data-driven, here's the data. The U.S. Department of Education Office for Civil Rights reports that nationally, black girls are six times more likely to be suspended than any other race or ethnicity. The most recent publicly available data from 2012 shows that in Boston school districts, black girls comprise 28% of female students, but account for 61% of girls suspended and 63% of girls expelled, and were disciplined at rates 11 times that of white girls. A growing body of evidence supports that school climate and policies impact black girls' academic self-esteem, risk of teen pregnancy, juvenile and adult delinquency, and a host of mental and physical health problems. This hearing order aims to help understand our current school policies, both in district and charter, intent and impact. In partnership with the National Black Women's Justice Institute, we will empower and engage young women as stakeholders in their policymaking, will conduct focus groups with girls of color and administrators from BPS and BCYF to create a new model for ensuring equity and educational opportunities for all our students. I look forward to the hearing, and I am so excited to host these constructive conversations and to discuss institutionalizing policies that empower our young people, especially our young girls of color. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Counselor Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I just want to thank Counselor Presley for her steadfast advocacy in this space, in particular for women and girls. This is, the Cook Sisters actually came to my annual turkey fry, and I got to meet, actually, meet them again, and I'm very, very encouraged by their willingness and their family's willingness to stand up for what is right and what is just. Restorative justice is the move. We need to have schools that are keeping young people in schools rather than pushing them out of schools. And in particular, many of my friends who are in the charter movement speak about longer school days. Well, you know what? We know that you don't learn if you're not in school, and suspensions and disparities in suspension, when we're looking at 28% of the population that is suspended at over twice the rate in which they exist in the schools, that is absolutely unacceptable. But what is also unacceptable are cuts to the Boston Public School budget. And that exacerbates these issues. If there are not enough adults in a building, what results are policies that are draconian and actually end up pushing people out, suspending folks, as well as ensuring that they're not able to come back to school due to expulsions. A couple of years ago, Counselor McCarthy and I, and actually others, actually Counselor Presley, stood up for the five individuals that we have in the city of Boston and the Boston Public Schools who are supervisors of attendance. We only have five truancy officers in the city of Boston, and many of the behaviors that lead to these disparities also exist because we do not have the human resources to do the work that we're doing. We know that many of our young people are traumatized. We know that many of our young people need extra support, and we know year over year, on an annual basis, that the budget has been cut and has been stripped from the supportive surround care and services that young people need in order so that they are able to stay in school, able to learn, and able to succeed and become their best selves. So I think as we have this conversation, it needs to be in the context of the actual resources that these young people, their families, and their school communities need in order for them to be successful. By the way, restorative justice actually costs money. We need people to staff and also train to ensure that that occurs. And one of our best programs that we have in the city of Boston was on a chopping block last year, Diploma Plus, which is a program at Charlestown High School that employs these exact practices. Their budget was cut, and how we filled that budget was by grants. We need to pay for and support the things that we should be doing and stop begging others to pay for the underlying support. If we're serious about dealing with these issues, if we're serious about increasing the graduation rates for young people in the city of Boston, if we're serious about vocational training and education in the city of Boston, we have to actually fund it. And this budget does not do that. It's not $40 million. It's really a $9 million increase year over year to the funding that we currently have. And that is actually half of what we voted on to support the Boston Public Schools in terms of an increase from last year. So I appreciate and give kudos to Counselor Presley for this work, but we're not serious about this work if we don't fund it. A budget is a value statement, and if we continue to abdicate the responsibility to fully fund the Boston Public Schools, then that means we're not serious about these issues. Thank you very much, Madam President, and please add my name.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Jackson's name. Please add Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Sabi George, Counselor Lamatina, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Zachem, Counselor McCarthy. Please add the chair's name. And Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to thank and commend Counselor Presley on this awesome working group, focus group, however it turns out, because this is extremely important, not just for black girls, but Latino girls and girls of color in the city of Boston. And I applaud your effort from when you, you know, joined this council on day one for always putting young girls at the forefront. As a former education attorney who represented kids in school disciplinary hearings in BPS charter schools and sometimes through the MEKO program, sometimes private schools, girls were often overlooked. The rates in which girls were being disciplined, particularly girls of color in the city of Boston, was the fastest growing, and we often didn't talk about that. We talked about males, Latino boys, Latino, sorry, Latino males and black boys, but we didn't talk about girls. And I think this is a real opportunity to not only talk about it in the school context without making that distinction of charter versus BPS. It doesn't matter. It's happening all across the state of Massachusetts. It's happening in different types of schools, private schools, parochial, charter schools, traditional public schools. This is a major issue, and if we're serious about young girls being successful and thriving in the city of Boston, graduating from high school with their self-esteem and confidence intact, we have to do work. I don't think it's a money issue. I think it's changing the culture of our schools. It's getting professionals, it's getting principals, it's getting teachers to look at when a young person makes a mistake, how do we want to respond to that? Restorative justice principles, like Counselor Jackson mentioned, are definitely a way to go, but there are other ways also to respond to girls who make mistakes. Sometimes we saw some really egregious examples of young people who simply made a mistake but who were expelled for the entire year. And when you expel a student, they often don't want to come back. They often are the ones who are dropping out. So I commend the work that you're doing. I commend this particular work. I ask that my name be added. And lastly, I'll say, even with the progressive disciplinary laws that this state passed, young girls are still struggling. Even with laws and mandates that require schools not to push out kids but to work with them first, to have meetings and counseling sessions, that's not always necessarily happening. So we have to not only change the culture, but look at whether or not we're abiding by existing laws and policies to ensure that kids stay in school and that we continue to focus on educating them, helping them deal with whatever they're coming into school with, those root causes, and ensuring that they're successful. All of us, I'm sure, can point to when we were acting like knuckleheads or whatever else in school, where we had a teacher who simply pulled us aside, said something to us, straightened us out, and we went back to the classroom and continued learning. And sometimes that happens, and sometimes it doesn't. So we have a lot of work to do, but thank you so much for your work. Add my name, Madam President, and thank you again, Counselor Presley.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Campbell's name. Please add Counselor Baker and Counselor Siomo as well. And docket number 0820 will be assigned to the Committee on Healthy Women, Families,
Docket number 0822, Councilors Wu and Flaherty offered the following order for hearing regarding, I'm sorry.
Madam Clerk, yeah.
I just skipped right over.
Yeah.
Docket number 0821, Councilors Wu and Presley offered the following resolution, supporting the renewal of the Fenway Cultural District designation.
Chair recognizes Counselor Wu.
Mr. President, first, I just wanted, as a follow-up to the previous hearing order, to ask for suspension of the rule, move for suspension of the rules and add co-sponsors Counselor Jackson and Counselor Zachem as well.
Do we have any objections? Madam Clerk, will you please add Counselor Jackson and Counselor Zachem?
Oh, is this mic on? Thank you. Okay, sorry. So as I was saying, just so everyone knows why we're voting on this, every cultural district that gets approved by the state at the Mass Cultural Council is approved for five years. After that, they need to come back and have a public meeting before their city council and get a vote to review how it went and then to seek five more years. So I'm really honored to be partnering with everyone associated with this. I know Councilors Jackson and Presley were on the initial designation in 2011, along with then-Counselor Mike Ross. So Counselor Zachem and I have hopped on since then to try to push this and give this as much visibility as possible. We heard from Chief of Arts and Culture Julie Burrows, Executive Director of the Fenway Alliance Kelly Brilliant, and a panel which included representatives from Museum of Fine Arts, Symphony Hall, Simmons College, First Church of Christ Scientist, and the Berklee College of Music. I'll leave it to my colleagues to fill in the details, but as Chair of the committee would recommend that we adopt this resolution today and make sure that this cultural district gets their chance at renewal at the state.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. Chair recognizes Counselor Presley.
So enthusiastic about the merits of why this should be reauthorized. I did just want to say, I'm especially excited to co-sponsor this reauthorization because of the potential for continued and future collaboration among our now three cultural districts. We have the Fenway Cultural District, the Literary Cultural District, and the Roxbury Cultural District. And all three have unique assets that make the prospect of cross-marketing and cross-pollination and advertising an amazing next step in ensuring that every neighborhood and advertising an amazing next step in ensuring that every neighborhood has access to arts and culture and innovation and historical preservation. So I hope all my colleagues will sign on and enthusiastically support this resolution. I thank Counselors Wu, Zachem, Jackson, and shout out to our former colleague, Mike Ross, for their partnership and leadership in this endeavor. And then we want to thank Kelly Brilliant for her shepherding and her stewardship specifically of the Fenway Cultural District. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Chair recognizes Counselor Zachem.
Thank you, Chair. Want to thank Counselors Wu and Presley and Jackson for their efforts on this. It was really a fabulous hearing and a great venue. Maybe we could move our meetings over there while the renovations are going on. But it was great to hear from really all the major institutional residents in the Fenway area, but also the residents, the Fenway Civic Association, members of CDCs, a lot of familiar faces in the audience there who all spoke in favor of this, and not just about the symbolic importance of designating this as a cultural district, but also the fact that there were real practical benefits to these institutions and resident groups from being able to collaborate under the umbrella of the cultural district that Kelly Brilliant and her organization and the Alliance have done a great job of shepherding this. But what was really important was this had real demonstrative impact in how these organizations worked together, how they opened their doors to the entire city of Boston community and broader by having a community event, collaborating with all sorts of different events to expose groups that may not often go to some of the cultural institutions, the Stowe Garden Museum, the MFA, and others in partnerships with some of the students, particularly at Berkeley and the Anunin Observatory, which are now one, so that they can all work together and really enhance the economic impact, social and cultural impact of these great institutions. So looking forward to voting on this, and I would ask that all our colleagues support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zachem. Chair recognizes Counselor Jackson.
Counselor President Wu, Counselor Presley, as well as Counselor Zachem and former Counselor Mike Ross, this is an amazing program. I got to drive down to New Bedford and speak on the Roxbury Cultural District, which recently passed, and I'm very excited about that. But these cultural districts are about commerce. We also, we appreciate the cultural aspect of that, but we do need to note that these institutions actually bring in a lot of people as well as commerce to the city of Boston. It also serves as a platform for collaboration and really engenders an increase in just community as a whole. So very happy to be part of this cultural district extension. This is one of the first pieces of legislation that I got to work on in 2011. I'm very happy to see it extended. And also, that fact that Berkeley is actually going to be included in this one, I think, is somewhat of a no-brainer. And again, props to Kelly Brilliant and the Fenway Alliance for the great work that they continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Counselor Flaherty, would you like to sign on? You want to speak? No. Madam Chair, will you please add Counselor Flaherty, Counselor George, Counselor Siomo? Please add Counselor O'Malley, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Linehan, Counselor Salamantina. And would you please also add the Chair's name? Counselor Wu, Presley, Jackson, and Zachem are looking to suspend and adopt. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Madam Chair, 0821 has been adopted, correct? Thank you.
Docket number 0822, Counselors Wu and Flaherty offer the following order for hearing regarding reducing the carbon footprint of Boston City Hall and other municipal buildings.
Chair recognizes Counselor Wu.
Thank you again, Mr. Vice President, and thank you to Counselor Flaherty for partnering on. As the United States pulls out of the Paris Climate Accord, we join two other countries, Nicaragua and Syria, as the only ones not participating in this global effort to fight climate change. I was proud to represent the council in standing with Mayor Walsh at his press conference announcing that the city of Boston believes that this is a horrible idea, but that we would proceed nonetheless. So it's clear that now is the time to dig in, to take every action that we possibly can to stop climate change. I think Counselor O'Malley and I have a few ideas on what we could do, but here is another set of things. As I was doing research on what we could do immediately now within our jurisdiction, thinking about City Hall and all of our buildings and all of the energy, all of the recycling possibilities, came up that Counselor Flaherty had proposed almost the exact same hearing order back in 2008, if I'm correct. So excited to revive this amidst a new urgency. So we're talking about, again, looking at our heating and cooling, looking at our electricity usage, looking at whether we are recycling all of the papers and bottles and everything that comes through this building and all of our other municipal buildings, looking at water management, as well as our energy sourcing. My understanding is that City Hall already does its own energy procurement, so we could be on 100% renewable energy for all city buildings if we wanted to tomorrow. We could change that. It's within our authority. These are all things that have impact that we could do immediately. And frankly, there are also things that we are always asking the private sector to do as well. The private sector and many businesses and new companies in Boston know that to attract the best talent, they not only have to be a great company, they have to provide a great workplace. That includes LEED certification and all of these things to make sure that they're saving money for the business and energy costs, but also providing the healthiest possible work environment for employees. So let's make sure that we in City Hall are setting the best possible example, that we're walking the walk as well in what we're asking others to do. And also, let's make sure we're reaping these benefits. I know, I think I could predict what Counselor O'Malley is going to stand up and say about cost savings and the dovetailing of the fact that this is great in so many ways. We need to capture the cost savings from energy efficiency, make sure we're providing the healthiest workplace for city employees, and most of all, let's do what is within our power to do now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. Chair recognizes Counselor Flaherty.
Actually, back to 2008, when I had partnered with the Boston Area Solar Energy Association to bring about some very much-needed changes with respect to City Hall and other municipal buildings. And some people here remember, we had an administration that was somewhat cantankerous, and they didn't actually embrace
I don't remember.
...new ideas. And so we actually have an administration now that will hopefully embrace this. So we were actually able to do a few things the last time without ruffling too many feathers and calling for the integration of plants and trees, as well as the forest surfaces around the plaza. And the most important one was we were able to effectively manage the stormwater runoff from this building and other municipal buildings. So we were able to get a few things done. I'm hopeful, under Counselor President Wu's leadership and this new administration, that they'll embrace some more of the changes that were brought forward back in 2008 from the Boston Area Solar Energy Association. So look forward to the hearing. It really actually started when I went from the president's office over to the Faneuil Hall side, and I can vouch for my colleagues whose offices are over there. We actually have lights that when you shut the switch off, the lights don't go off. So in a sense, my lights have been on over there for over 10 years, as have my colleagues. It's really, it's asinine. So we haven't even got to the bottom of that yet. So this building, because of the way that it's structured and because of antiquated systems, we literally have, on the Faneuil Hall side of the building, the lights don't go off. The only way they go off is when the bulb runs out, Frank. So that needs to change. So that's going to be sort of my to-do list on that side as to how do we get the lights to shut off on the Faneuil Hall.
The lights are on, but nobody's home, right?
That's right, right. So, but also looking at not just City Hall, look at all the other municipal buildings and find out where we could make some very cost-effective and meaningful changes. And it's a great day. It coincides with today. I unveiled the recycle-with-Michael bags for our seniors, and so this is an environmentally friendly day for me. So thank you for partnering and look forward to the hearing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Chair recognizes Counselor O'Malley.
Important to ask that my name be added, a couple of points I just wanted to make, just an addendum to the council president. She is correct in saying that the United States now joins Syria and Nicaragua for not being part of the climate Paris Accords. It should be noted that Nicaragua is not a member of this because they do not feel that it goes far enough. 50% of all energy in Nicaragua comes from renewable energy sources, and they have a very aggressive plan to get to 90% by 2020. So I think that should be noted. It is beyond disappointing that the United States is no longer a member of this. It is absolutely infuriating from where I stand. Who would ever have thought that in 2017 it would be up for debate whether or not climate change is real? It is real, and science matters. And the fact that we have a president and an EPA administrator who have said, they now say it was joking, but they won't answer the question, that climate change is a hoax perpetrated by the Chinese, it is absurd. Getting out of the Paris Accords, this isn't something that we talk about our children and our grandchildren. This is going to affect us. The president said, in a way that only he can, that he was elected to represent the people of Pittsburgh, not Paris. Fair point, and I'm all for alliteration. Fortunately, because of leadership in Paris with Mayor Bill Paduto, partnering with the mayor of Paris, Anne Hidalgo, they've been able to come up with their own agreement of what they're going to do. This is going to be up to cities and towns to undo the incredible damage that is coming from Washington as it pertains to climate change. We've done a lot of good things in this city. One of the first things I did, actually, less than half of you now may remember, is in 2011, I put a resolution forward that would allow people to opt out of the paperless pay stubs every two weeks. We would get our pay stub, most of us would do direct deposit. There would always be leftover envelopes from a counselor who was no longer serving, and we'd always check to make sure our name wasn't on that envelope. We couldn't even do that till 2011. We did that. I think it should be noted, the previous administration did lead when it came to passing Bierto, that this council passed, the Boston Energy Reporting and Disclosure Ordinance. That was a fantastic piece of legislation, and it goes right to the heart of what the council president and Counselor Flaherty want to do today that we all support, really looking at what we can do at the city level. We need to make sure that the state lives up to their end of the bargain as well. This council, two or three years ago, passed an ordinance that would allow for PV roofs, so solar-powered roof, at the Tobin Community Center in Counselor Zachem's district, at Curtis Hall in my district, and I believe it was either an Alston-Brighton or Dorchester the Third site, to have a solar-powered roof. Energy that would then be used as a resource if, God forbid, there was some catastrophe and we'd lose power, that would then support our public safety officials' communications equipment. It's being held up at the state. But, you know, I could go on and on. I'm going a little bit off topic. I just wanted to say thank you to the two individuals for their leadership on this. This is up to us now. I have never felt more pressure and more responsibility for cities and towns to lead when it comes to combating climate change because it is up to us. We have been abandoned by Washington when it comes to leaving a safer planet, not only for our children and our grandchildren, but for ourselves as well. So the city has to act. There's a number of things that we have in the pipeline we're going to continue to push. They all won't be politically popular necessarily, but it's the right thing to do. It's good for the environment, it's good for the ratepayer, it's good for the taxpayer. It is up to each and every one of us to lead on the issues of climate change. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Please add Counselor O'Malley. Please add Counselor Zachem, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Linehan, Counselor George, Counselor Chair recognizes Counselor Presley.
Oh, no, I don't want to follow that. Just add my name.
Okay, I thought you wanted to speak.
Yes, I did.
Please add Counselor Presley. But Matt covered it. Good job, Matt. Please add Counselor Lamontina's name. Did I get everybody over here? Chair recognizes Counselor Presley, I mean, sorry, Counselor Jackson. Lights blinking all over the place. You're next, buddy, I got you.
To Counselor Wu and Counselor Flaherty for Counselor O'Malley just noted, the city of Boston needs to lead by example. As we all push for the private sector to actually look at their energy uses in buildings, we should be doing the same exact thing. In the Build BPS process, we have over 120 school buildings that we should be looking at. Community choice energy should be something that is in the forefront, not something that we drag our feet on. And it's something that, again, Counselor O'Malley has also put forward, even plastic bags. That is something that we should be leading on, and we're not in this space. And so I think it's really important, as noted, that we have people in Washington and actually a president who has abdicated his responsibility. It is embarrassing, but it means that no cavalry is coming to save us, right? The feds aren't coming in on these issues, and it means the city of Boston has to step up. And we are the first in a whole host of areas. This is an area we have to step up on because I don't believe that we're leading enough in this space. And that we have colleagues on this council who, as far back as 2008 on this particular issue, folks who speak in passion, regular basis on these issues. But this is really where the rubber meets the road. This is our opportunity to step forward and show what we're about in the city of Boston. And we should be taking the most aggressive, most thoughtful legislation and actually be shooting for 2030 and not 2050 to wean ourselves off of the fossil fuels that are out there. We should also be thinking about where our money goes and who we're supporting relative to fossil fuels, relative to the dollars that our pension is connected to. So there's a lot that we should be doing in the city of Boston, and we should be leading and being in an international conversation about the leadership that Boston has in this space. It's our time. I look forward to supporting this as well as signing on. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Please add Counselor Jackson's name. Chair recognizes Counselor Linehan.
Mr. Vice President, thank you for the opportunity to say a few words. I'm going to take this from a different tact. Ground zero, and I think that it's really important, talking about our carbon footprint, we need to talk about City Hall. City Hall needs to go. I mean, for 10 years on this council, I've indicated that this is one of the most inefficient buildings that there is, and that it's representative of inefficiency and inability to access and quality use. So we should, if we were thinking about this building and then all the other buildings, we would need to first sell this, build a zero-based energy building for our City Hall, but at the same time, review all buildings. And I know that some of that is being done now, but to create the opportunity for a quality assessment and then these energy companies to come in and retrofit all of our buildings. And that can be done offline. It doesn't even have to be done within the budget system. And so for me, it's more about saving the efficiency and the energy and all of the money that we spend on that and that an example. And I'll say that in, over 15 years ago, I was asked by the past administration on, let's come up with an idea that we could use going forward, and I suggested that we sell City Hall. And they told me I was great. But this building, it may be an architectural masterpiece, but it
I get the sarcasm, yes.
I say may, but it surely is a truly inefficient space to run a government out of for the people, by the people, and costing the people, right? Okay, so I'm on board, and I think that we need to be steadfast on these energy efficiencies that are right there, right now, that could be implemented and need to work in that space.
Thank you, Counselor Linehan. Would you like to sign on? Please add Counselor Linehan's. Counselor Siomo, did you want to speak? Chair recognizes Counselor Siomo.
Did I also join Counselor O'Malley, and I failed to mention in the ASME contract that they are now mandated to only get electronic pay stubs. I guess you have to negotiate that now, but I think that's a great thing. I also want to agree with Counselor Linehan, we need a feasibility study on the cost of doing these kinds of LEED certifications. And the Brighton Library, just about three or four years ago, finished renovations, became the first LEED-certified city-owned building. I don't know if it still is, but it was three or four years ago. It was the library I went to as a kid. It was built in this brutalist architectural style.
and Veterans Affairs, and the Committee on Environment and Sustainability. Oh, yes, will you please add my name also? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I do just want to say for the record, I love City Hall and think it's beautiful. So there's some of us who want to stay, rather be here than sit in the State House any day. Okay, personnel orders.
Docket number 0823. Council Wu, Council McCarthy.
Council McCarthy moves for suspension and passage of docket 0823. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, docket 0823 has been passed.
Docket number 0824. Council Wu for Council McCarthy.
Council McCarthy moves for suspension and passage of docket 0824. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Docket 0824 has been passed.
Docket number 0825. Council Wu for Council Zachem.
Council Zachem moves for suspension and passage of docket 0825. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Docket 0825 has been passed.
Docket number 0826. Council Wu for Council Zachem.
Council Zachem moves for suspension and passage of docket 0826. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, docket 0826 has been passed.
Docket 0827. Council Wu for Council Zachem.
Council Zachem moves for suspension and passage of docket 0827. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, docket 0827 has been passed.
Docket number 0828. Council Wu for Council Presley.
Council Presley moves for suspension and passage of docket 0828. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Docket 0828 has been passed.
Docket number 0829. Council Wu for Council Presley.
Council Presley moves for suspension and passage of docket 0829. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Docket 0829 has been passed.
Docket number 0825. Council Wu for Council Zachem.
Council Zachem moves for suspension and passage of docket 0825. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Docket 0825 has been passed.
Docket number 0826. Council Wu for Council Zachem.
Council Zachem moves for suspension and passage of docket 0826. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, docket 0826 has been passed.
Docket 0827. Council Wu for Council Zachem.
Council Zachem moves for suspension and passage of docket 0827. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, docket 0827 has been passed.
Docket number 0828. Council Wu for Council Presley.
Council Presley moves for suspension and passage of docket 0828. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Docket 0828 has been passed.
Docket number 0829. Council Wu for Council Presley.
Council Presley moves for suspension and passage of docket 0829. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Docket 0829 has been passed.
Docket number 0830. Council Wu for Council Flaherty.
Council Flaherty moves for suspension and passage of docket 0830. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Docket 0830 has been passed.
Docket number 0831. Council Wu for Council Flaherty.
And Council Flaherty moves for suspension and passage of docket 0831. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Docket 0831 has been passed. I am informed by the clerk that there are no late filed matters to be added to the agenda. Only two late filed matters for the consent agenda, which in the absence of objection will be added. Hearing no objection, the matters are added, and Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, consent agenda is adopted. Would anyone like to pull a matter from the green sheets? No takers. And finally, just pausing for announcements or statements. Council Jackson, you have the floor.
Madam President, I rise to ask that we add Prince to the, our remembrance. Today is actually his birthday. He is one of my favorite artists ever, and that is the reason why I wore purple today. And it's probably the reason why two of my other colleagues also wore purple. So if we could actually pause at the end and remember to him. Thank you so much.
Noted. Thank you, Council Jackson. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today, I just want to, I just want to rise, it's actually the one-year anniversary on Sunday of my father's passing, and thank everybody for standing with my family and me last year. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Baker. So at this time, I'd like to ask all councillors and guests, please rise. The council will adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Council Baker, Greg Allman, Arthur Clooney, and Harold Buzzigould. For Council Siomo, Patrick J. Pat Fly, and Elizabeth Betty McBride. For Council Flaherty, William T. Hogan. For Council Lamantina, Anne Marie Di Martinez-Vivas. And on behalf of the entire council, Prince and James Baker. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, we do so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. We're scheduled to meet again Wednesday, June 14th, at 12 noon. All in favor of adjournment, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, council is adjourned.